Like to call to order the Proctor City Council meeting for Monday, August 5th, 2024. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perform a roll call at this time. Counselor Benson?
Present.
Counselor Reuter?
Present.
Counselor Johnson?
Present.
Counselor DeWol?
Present.
Mayor Ward is also present. Please let the minutes reflect all others in attendance. Attorney Berta and Administrator Rich and Finance Director Grunfeld. Looking for a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for Monday, July 15th, 2024?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Reuter made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Johnson, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Counselor DeWol. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Brings us to comments and suggestions from citizens present. The public comment suggestion period of the meeting is when the city council offers a time for everyone in attendance or watching from home to address the city council. Once we move on from the public comment suggestion period of the meeting, members of public will no longer be allowed to address the council unless the mayor acknowledges you. As a general rule, the council will listen to all comments but will not comment on or respond to any comments made by speakers. The council will not engage in dialogue. However, any council member can ask questions. If you'd like to address city council during the public comment suggestion period of the meeting, please come forward to the podium or dial 218-628-6289. Before you begin, please state your name and address for the meeting minutes. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Anyone addressing the city council will be prohibited from using profane, obscene, or threatening language or boisterous conduct that disrupts the meeting or the security of the public. Is there anyone at this time that is interested in participating in the public comment suggestion period of the meeting? Please come forward or dial 218-628-6289. We'll give that a minute. Hearing none, we'll move on. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, but I'd like to pull 4A and 4B. Is there a second to that motion?
Support.
Counselor Benson supports it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. 4A, Clerk advises council special events, public safety. In your packet were a number of events that public safety did recommend to council for approval. So we're just looking for a motion to approve the Lakehead Racing Association XR Northern Storm Challenge for Friday, August 9th, 2024. I'll make a motion to approve that event. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Reuter. Any further discussion?
Uh, Ms. Mayor?
Counselor Benson?
On the, that, this was for the Lakehead Racing?
Correct.
Um, was the Fair Board informed?
Yes.
Because it goes through the protocol?
Yep. Administrator Rich sent an email to the Lakehead Racing Association confirming that and it was...
Okay. Thank you.
Ran through it the way their contractor is. Any other discussion?
Ms. Mayor?
Counselor Benson?
On the insurance, which I'm looking for, but I really can't see it. I apologize. I didn't notice if the city was added as an additional insured. And I don't even know if that's needed anymore, but...
It is, and again Administrator Rich sent an email regarding that to Mary with the Fair Board and they did have the correct insurance for the city, correct Administrator Rich?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, and that would be my same question also for the insurance for the ICAD parade.
I believe it was all sent, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Next event is the Proctor Pizza Keyboard Lounge Hoghead Pep Parade, Thursday, August 15th, 2024. Looking for a motion to approve this event due to the amplified outdoor music.
So move.
Counselor Benson made the motion. Is there a second? I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Third event is the Proctor Hoghead Parade, Saturday, August 17th, 2024. Looking for a motion to approve the event?
So move.
Counselor Reuter made the motion, seconded by Counselor Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Looking for a motion to approve the Keyboard Lounge Hoghead Lot Party, Saturday, August 17th, 2024, due to the amplified outdoor music. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Counselor Benson made the motion. Is there a second? I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. And last event is the Lakehead Racing Association Monster Truck Nitro Tour held on Saturday, September 14th, 2024.
So move.
Second.
Counselor Reuter made the motion, seconded by Counselor Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. And then I guess we'd like a motion too to approve the street closures that public safety recommended for Saturday, August 17th, due to public safety.
So move.
Counselor Reuter made a motion. Is there a second? Or Counselor Johnson made the motion. Is there a second? I'll second that. Any further discussion? Counselor Benson?
Ms. Mayor? So with the, the street closures, if there is a vendor, will they be allowed within that area with the proper peddler's license?
Yeah, so any vendor that's interested in having a food truck or stationed down on these closed off areas should get in contact with City Hall or visit the City Hall website, fill out the peddler's license and, and get direction from City Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Brings us to 4B, Fire Department Members' Resignation. In your packet was an email from Chief Healthwist accepting the resignation from firefighter Derek Corindo, and I am looking for a motion to approve the resignation. Counselor Reuter made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor DeWol. Any further discussion? I would just like to thank Derek for his 19 years of being on the volunteer fire department. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. That will bring us to 6A under New Business. Resolution 45-24, support for the CSAH 13 Midway Road Railroad Crossing Planning and Preliminary Engineering Project. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 45-24?
So move.
Counselor Johnson made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Counselor Reuter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Brings us to 6B, Resolution 46-24, approving conditional use permit to operate a short-term rental. In your packet was the PMZ minutes from the public hearing regarding this, and on your desk was an updated resolution reflecting the triplex with short-term rentals. Looking for a motion to approve 46, Resolution 46-24. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 46-24. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Counselor Reuter. Any further discussion? Counselor Benson?
Um, I noticed in the minutes there wasn't any discussion on, like a lodging tax, but I would imagine that would include, be included into the short-term rentals.
Yeah, it is ordinance, ordinance says that short-term rentals have to pay lodging tax.
Okay. And as far as property taxes go, that's in the hands of St. Louis County assessors and they'll figure out the business end and...
Yes, that's correct.
Residential. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. 6C, Resolution 47-24, accepting donation to the city of Proctor from the Gordy Downs Trust Fund. Looks like they donated $43,274.72 for the purchase of a Toro Grandmaster 3500D for the municipal golf course. Is there a motion to accept a donation under Resolution 47-24?
So move.
Or a second?
Second.
Counselor Benson made the, made the motion. Counselor Johnson seconded. Any further discussion?
Do we, do we know, did it come?
It has been delivered, yep.
Nice. Okay.
Any other discussion?
Probably want to get a picture of that Jake with...
With you writing it?
Jess, Jess writing on it.
Done.
Any others got here? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. 6D, Proclamation 01-24, National Sea Tracks and Train Week. Again, National Rail Safety Week, we're proclaiming the week of September 23rd through the 29th of 2024, National Sea Tracks and Train Week. Is there a motion to approve Proclamation 01-24?
So move.
Counselor Reuter made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor DeWol. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. 6E, Midterm Market Rate Adjustment Task Force Minutes and Recommendations. So in your packet was a minutes from the wage study task force regarding the PD, Police Department, and their wage study. As you see, the recommendation looks like we're in the, below the 50, 50 percentile and they were recommending... Does it say what they're recommending here? Five, five percent mid-contract market rate adjustment. Is there a motion to approve the market rate adjustment? I'll make a motion for discussion.
I'll second it for discussion.
Seconded by Counselor DeWol. Any discussion?
You go ahead and start.
You start. I, I'm not opposed to this. If we're below the 50 percentile, I think we need to look at where we're at, but in my opinion, I would like to bring this to our next budget meeting with numbers that maybe Leslie can put together. My concern is we just did one department within the city. If we're gonna do that, I think it's only right to look at citywide and have Leslie present numbers maybe at, at our next budget meeting to see how they fit in with, with our budget. It's, it's, and I, I appreciate everything the PD does, right, and, and the jobs that they have, but I, I appreciate all of our employees, so I'd like to see maybe if we could look at doing the wage study for the citywide. That's my opinion. Any other discussion on that?
I, I would also concur that... Was a recommendation to go through for a market adjustment, but I didn't anticipate it hitting council just yet. I do believe that if we do one department, we should do them all. Otherwise, we're gonna have issues. And then I would also agree that I'd like to see if, if Leslie puts something together, bring it to our next budget meeting so that we can figure out within our budget what we can do and kind of just have a discussion on that aspect during budget meeting.
Any other discussion? Well, Counselor Benson?
Yeah, thank you. And I thought it was interesting that Hermantown, Duluth, and Cloquet was in one category, but yet you had Ely, Gilbert, Silver Bay, Two Harbors, East Strange, and Babbitt in another category for consideration. And just like Duluth, Hermantown, and Cloquet, these are communities that have access to IRRB funding, which kind of also puts them in a slightly different category. So I don't know how else you could create that matrix for a comparable wage study. Because we're kind of unique.
No, and I, I talked with Finance Director Grunfeld earlier today, and I asked him how much it costs to do a wage study with a third-party company coming. I don't know if you found those numbers, but I think it was 20, you guys thought, remember? 20, 20,000 if you do it? I have, I have trust in our finance director and I think her numbers may reflect, in any wage study that you do, there's going to be some disparities, right? You can have arguments on both sides of the table, but I think, and I haven't seen the numbers yet, but I think Leslie could put some together for a lot less than 20,000 and present it to the council at our next budget meeting.
I think the other little piece of data that is missing is proximity to tribal lands. As I know other government agencies use that for different purposes, but that might be something to consider as well, at least for this.
So I would, if council's okay with those thoughts, I can amend my motion to reflect bringing this wage study back to a budget meeting with numbers presented by Leslie for the, the city as a whole, not just one department. I'll amend my motion if Counselor DeWol wants to reflect the same.
I'll reflect the same.
Any, any other discussion, Counselor Johnson?
Yes, can we throw in some of them, you know, the Ely, the Two Harbors, the East Strange, the Babbitt, you know, that are more, if you want to say...
Can you do that, Ben?
Uh, well, I can do my best. I mean, the, the data that I have came from the League of Minnesota Cities Study, and those cities can provide data to those...
Oh.
And why they're not there.
If they're represented by LELS, I think you can go right on their website.
Well, certainly for the fleets, I know, but to get a citywide on all those cities might be difficult.
I hear you.
Mr. Benson, is Silver Bay and Two Harbors, are they IRRB or whatever money?
Yes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. I guess I should have asked this, but we don't have a budget, another budget meeting set up in the near future, do we? Do you know, Leslie, that it'll take you to gather some info? I just, I would like to meet on it so we can address it rather than letting it simmer for a while.
And then there was some questions from our last budget meeting that you were gonna check into?
Yeah, I have some of that information already.
I was just gonna say, maybe we can dovetail?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect.
Just because it's the middle of summer, I just feel like I've got a lot of vacations in the next two weeks.
Right.
The next two weeks, so I would say not, at least not until the week of August 26th.
Yeah, and I'm not, yeah, enjoy your vacations, right, but I just, I want it to stay on our front burner so we don't lose track of it.
Absolutely. I think it would be nice to do it before September 30th.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Benson.
While our finance director is still here, I, I do, again, thank you for the quarterly financial update. Very much appreciated.
You're welcome.
All right. Moving on to number seven, closed session, looking for a motion to close portion of the meeting permitted by section, Minnesota State Statute 13D 05 subdivision 3C to consider offers relating to the city's potential acquisition of portions of the following parcels of land 185-0240-00607 and parcel code 185-0240-00750. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Counselor DeWol made the motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Reuter. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I think so.
Motion passes. Motion passes.
...
I have nothing.
Attorney Verda?
Thank you.
Looking for a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $269,124.22?
So...
Counselor Roeder made the motion. Is there a second? I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Counselor DeWolfe made the motion to adjourn. Is there a second? I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you.